Somebody that lives in the area that has an airplane. It's a single yellow airplane that is not a hot passenger. It's a Piper that flies over. It's a model V-100 and circles around the area and leaves. There is somebody out there. Whatever, something.
Jason, are we good?
Yeah.
It is 6:30 by the computer clock, so we will open the meeting for the Rappahoe County Planning Commission Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. It is 6:30. Our first item of business is to note that we do have a quorum. There was one member absent. I would call it excuse because she let us know she wouldn't be here due to illness. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from December 18th of 2018. All the board members have received a copy. Are there any corrections? Mrs. Woodland, I think you have one.
There's one correction to the minutes. It's just a spelling error on page seven under item three. It's the second paragraph from the top, four lines down. She wanted to know if that was being addressed. The word "address" is miss-- it should be addressed "ED," not "address." So I move that. Once it is corrected, we accept the minutes.
Any other comments or corrections? Do we have a motion to approve?
I believe this woman made a motion to approve, so I'll second.
Very good. Other's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? March and Currys, the minutes are approved unanimously. Our first item, item number one tonight, is SDP Z-18-001. Main Street Villas Pacific Development Plan with zoning, otherwise known as STPZ. And Cat Hammer will present for the county.
Good evening. Cat Hammer with the Planning Division. The attorney has reviewed the noticing documents and has determined the planning commission has jurisdiction to make recommendation of the Board of County Commissioners on this application. The site is located northwest of the intersection of South Main Street and West Sixth Place in Byers. The surrounding properties are used as single-family residential. The LAI Design Group is the applicant and on behalf of the owner, Bradbury Properties, propose to develop one existing vacant unplated lot through a two-step planned unit development process. This specific development plan will establish the specific land uses and development standards for the property. The applicant will be required to submit an administrative site plan if this SDP is approved. The ASP will provide the specifics of landscaping, lighting, architecture, and construction details. The existing vacant 4.16 acre parcel is proposed to be subdivided into two lots. The county is processing the proposed minor subdivision, PM-18-004, concurrently with this application. Proposal lot one is approximately 2.08 acres and includes eight attached residential buildings. Proposed lot two is approximately 1.77 acres and is under contact with our Rappahoe County libraries to be developed at a future time under a location and extent process. Track A is proposed as a shared track for both lots to fill the drainage and attention on the site. The applicant is proposing a trail from lot one to lot two on the east side of lot one in track A. A waiver for construction of a sidewalk was approved by the technical review committee with conditions that I've included in your report. The plan also proposes a maximum building height of 55 feet. After analysis of the existing surrounding properties, staff is recommending that the maximum building height be reduced to 35 feet with a three-story maximum on lot one. Those are included as conditions of approval. I have provided you with updated conditions of approval just to clarify when the sidewalk construction and the money required for that construction will need to be provided. We are requesting that money be provided at the time of ASP if this SDP is approved. I stand for any questions, and the applicant is here if you have any questions for them, and I do believe they want to speak.
I have a question. You referenced in our packet that you were recommending the reduced building height, but on our drawing here, it still shows in two places at 55 feet. Will that be changed?
Yes, condition number one requires that that plan will be updated if it is approved with a maximum building height of 35 feet.
So this would be redone to reflect that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. I have the developer come forward.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Carpenter. I represent LAI Design Group and Bradbury Company. We have been working with Kathy and her staff to get through this process, to develop this project. I know in the report, just one clarification on the word attainable, we want to make sure that you guys understand that this is more of a housing product that's new to buyers versus a tax credit or government-funded project. This is just a housing product that we feel would be good for first-time homebuyers like teachers or, you know, people who want to downsize from maybe the ranching community or want to come up to Byers. In regards to the conditions that were brought to our attention with our staff report that we received last week, in far as condition number one, we will continue to work with staff to respond and complete the SDP and the subdivision in regards to getting to my lot, so that we feel. Condition number two, the developer shall contribute funds for a future sidewalk construction based on cost estimate of construction. So staff correctly commented that we are not proposing, and we were given a variance on the sidewalk at South Main Street at this time. One thing that we would like, the condition removed from the approval, we would like to place a condition in a development agreement or a note on the SDP that at the time a sidewalk is warranted by the county, the developer will indeed pay for the sidewalk share in front of their property and under discussion about track A. Right now, we're receiving costs back from water taps and from the fire department per building, and for this project to be successful, putting money secured by the county does have a hardship on getting the project developed. Then the third condition in regards to building height, the property currently, we follow section 6.300 for a moderate density because for a single-family residence, we have more than four dwelling units per acre. So we are following the moderate density where up to 10.4 dwelling units are allowed. Therefore, a 55 height or a four-story is the max. And the reason why we would like to follow that is because during the ASP process, if we need to make a revision with staff, we don't want to have to come back and amend our SDP, as well as while the library is intended on lot one, the purchase of the property by the library has not been complete. So we also have not received elevations from the library to know what their intent is. So we would like to stand by the 55 feet or four stories per the code for the moderate density. And the final condition in regards to fire, yeah, fire did not comment on our plan and SDP, and we will continue to work with them in the ASP should this proceed forward. So in closing, during the referral process, all agencies were in support of the project, and we feel that the conditions that we have asked for relief from are warranted, and we look forward to moving forward with this project. There's any questions?
I have a couple of questions for you. So regarding number two, you know, because I do understand trying to do cash and we're, you know, banking with the county is a difficult process and can be a significant amount. But what would your provision be if you wanted to change this to say at a later date? Obviously, construction costs could increase significantly, so how would you address that?
The developer is here, but I feel that they would probably in turn rather pay a higher price at the time that the walk is warranted versus paying it and just having it sit there when they could use the funds to get the project completed. And yes, we are open to the terms of how this would be written in a development agreement or in a subdivision improvement plan, or if it's a note that is on the SDP.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, and then we'll have Bradbury speak.
When were you notified about this condition for the 35 feet versus the 55?
On the staff report, on receivable of the staff report. So I believe we've done three submittals up until this point, and that was never brought up before.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Are you aware of what the lot sizes are of the adjacent subdivisions?
Roughly, yes, ma'am. They are probably smaller lots, but this does follow the sub-area plan and the comp plan.
Okay, and they're basically, from what my understanding is, the adjacent subdivisions are basically, the single-family homes are much larger lots that don't have 55-foot height on their single-family residences. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
I believe Bradbury would like to speak to the sidewalk and the funding, if that's appropriate.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Stewart, and I work for the Bradburys. I'm their announced counsel, and I've met most of you from previous hearings. So just to address your question, really, the Bradburys have been very active in the community and Byers for many generations, and they want to bring this product to the community. They think it will be a great asset to diversify the availability of different kinds of housing down there or out there. What, as we're starting to get some of the pricing back, it is becoming a hardship to have any additional cost where we have to have an outlay of money. So what I do think would be appropriate is, you know, there's two sidewalks total out in Byers. There's one in front of the high school, there's one in front of the elementary school. And really, the issue is that we don't think there's any real timing, that there's going to be a true need to put the sidewalk in and to tie up money for that length of time is just something that we're not able to do. So any sort of restriction that we want to put into the SDP in terms of language to commit to do it, we don't have a problem at all if it ever is warranted doing our share of that sidewalk. And as to the building heights, I think Jennifer did a good job of addressing it, but we actually have developed the residential to the, I guess it would be to the south of the site, and came in, as you are probably aware, to give the 35-foot height limitation. So most of what we're proposing right now, if we do end up proceeding with this duplex project, would be in that 35-foot requirement. But if we need to, again, have a building height where the roof is itched up and we end up at 40 feet or 42, or we, I don't think we really anticipate that there's going to be a different use, but to have that flexibility on lot two as well is something that we would like to request.
Can you clarify the length of the sidewalk? If it were going to go in, how long we're talking about?
Jennifer knows that. I know it's about 70 feet in track A.
So lot one is approximately 286 feet, and track A is approximately 70, leaving lot two with, I need to refer. It's approximately 266.
So the first one was 280?
268, 70, and 266.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question for you. So it looks like you've intended like parrot homes or duplexes in your plan, so the 55 feet, in the event you were going to redesign it, maybe go to a three-story, you know, more like a condo correct? Or even if you, what I've been told is a standard three-story could even be 36 feet. So I don't know that we need 55, but we want, we would like to request more than 35. So.
Great, thank you. Is there an opportunity to bond part of the money for a future sidewalk, so it's not a cash outlay upfront, but bond it? Because who knows whether Bradbury is even going to be around at the point in time where a sidewalk is required, let's say it's three years after the last sale occurs?
There's definitely costs associated with doing letters of credit or bonding, and I think that if it's a condition that we have stated in the SDP, you're not going to get approvals of whatever you're building. Well, you're saying it's after we have the building in place, how do you satisfy that?
Exactly. I mean, just to have, I mean, it's nice to say, okay, when it's warranted. Okay, so who determines the criteria for when a sidewalk is warranted? Right, so you're assuming the county will decide that, right?
Well, I think, I think we're assuming that it's never going to be built.
Right, right.
But I think, I think that the county would be adequately protected if you enter into a development agreement, because then it would, you could assign it to successors and assigns. We would be bound, you could have it where we don't get released out off of the development agreement. So if you have something that continues after the approval of an improvement, then I think that would protect the county without the outlay of.
Perhaps.
I have questions actually for Kat when she's, if we're done with the developer.
Okay, can you walk me through what I'm guessing both planning and engineering staff's thoughts were as far as the 35-foot restriction if they were applying to do the moderate density, which does allow the 55?
Right, so in my review of the proposal, I was looking at what was surrounding that property. Currently, it's single-family homes, some trailers, very low building heights that exist right now. And then taking into consideration the property to, I think it's to the west, bigger lots, they came in for a GDP this year asking for a building height to be increased from, I think it's around 28 or 29 to 35 to allow for outbuildings for RVs and sheds like that. So those are the considerations I took into account when I determined that I think a 35-foot building height would fit best with the existing character.
Okay. And also regarding the sidewalk, so the county's asking for this as far as some sort of letter of credit or cash that the county would hold, I'm assuming indefinitely until a sidewalk is warranted. And maybe Bob can help me with this. Is there any statute of limitations on that? Let's say it's 10 years from now, they decide to put a sidewalk in or never, what happens for the entity that's put up the money?
I do want to clarify that the sidewalk, that the money we're requesting for the sidewalk is just for lot one and track A. It's not for lot two.
Okay.
I think one of the issues is, under our current code, it requires curb gutter sidewalk right now or when they build it. So it's not a matter of when it becomes warranted. The code anyhow, it's currently warranted. The TRC, I believe, gave them a variance on the curb and gutter. But is requiring the sidewalk. In reality, there isn't a sidewalk there. As you mentioned, there's like one, two sidewalks in Byers. But I think the idea being is they make the contribution, the county, in lieu of building something that's going to be a temporary sidewalk or a permanent sidewalk to nowhere, if that's proper consideration. But the idea is they meet their obligation now by paying the money, and when it becomes time to build it, the county will have some money to build that portion of the sidewalk.
Right, but what if they never do? What happens there? Because that's entirely possible. If they're never connecting sidewalks, everybody wants to keep it rural, or let's say they do drivable grass or gravel paths or something of that nature, then you've got this developer locked in time to put in an improvement that we thought at the time would be appropriate, and it ends up that it's not. I guess I understand their situation because there's a lot of funding that goes into, not only do you pay for the public improvements when you install them, you have to put up the cash in addition to both the county and SEMSWAT to cover whether or not you're going to install them. So there's, it's almost three times payment upfront, you know, when you're putting public improvements in one of these small developments. So I guess I'm just a little unclear. If we don't know that there's ever going to be a sidewalk, why we would hold them to this particular standard? So that's my county question, having experience at some level.
The decision was a TRC or what their thinking was, but I guess my thought is that if they feel that there's never going to be a need for a sidewalk, then they would have allowed the variance for the sidewalk as well as the curb and gutter.
Okay. Well, maybe Chuck, can you speak to all that, please? Yes, I hear Chuck. I had to get you up to it.
No problem. Chuck Haskins, Engineering Services Division. So they applied for a variance to the curb gutter and sidewalk, and TRC upheld the request to waive the curb and gutter because of the character and everything around it. But, you know, with this type of land use, we're getting a little bit more dense. We thought that it made sense to have a contribution towards a future sidewalk, and I think you both hit it right on the head is the way it's warranted. I don't know that we would ever be able to say that. The other option is they just build it concurrent with the project. And this is normally something, as you know, Commissioner, that we deal with on the SIA, which would become with the ASP. But I think if there's, if the planning commission doesn't think that a sidewalk is an appropriate installation in Byers, then you probably shouldn't make that as part of your recommendation. This is going forward to the Board of County Commissioners, I believe, next week, which is kind of difficult, because normally what we would do is if they didn't agree with TRC, which it sounds like they're not, they would appeal to the director, which we're not going to have time to do. So we're kind of in a little conundrum here. So, but staff thinks it'd be a good idea to have sidewalk there. You know, doesn't connect to anything, but looking at a library in the future, sure seems like it would be nice connection at least to the library. But we normally would meet with the applicant and discuss this, and we haven't really had a chance to do that, so I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lax, do you have any questions now further? You okay?
I'm good.
For a while. Any other questions? Okay, then we will open for the public hearing. Anybody wish to come forward and speak on this proposal? Do we have a sign-in sheet? You don't have to have signed in to speak. Okay, the first name is Stephanie Stewart, who I think we've heard from, Jennifer Carpenter we've heard from, Joseph Prinster.
I'm the engineer for the project, just here with questions.
Okay. And Michael Miller?
I'm representative of Bradbury Companies, and I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody else that here that would like to speak? You may come forward. To none? Yes, you can come forward.
So, and I know once you guys close, it's closed and we can't speak. So just in regards to the sidewalk, Bradbury, you know, is willing, when the time comes, to pay for a sidewalk. One reason why we have the curb and gutter waived is because of kind of a non-conforming roadway that's out there, and it would kind of not help anyone as far as engineering and drainage. But specifically in regards to the sidewalk, also, if we were to install it now, it could almost become a life and safety issue where we have some major drainage going on, we have a road that's jogging north and, or north and south. We're going to put the sidewalk in, and then where are we going to force people if they decide to keep going? Are they going to go forced into the road or onto somebody else's property? So we would definitely appreciate the opportunity to put something in the SIA with the ASP or in a development agreement or on the SDP. We should work with the city attorney for the correct verbiage stating that when the sidewalk is warranted, when you guys do come, same way that you will talk with other homeowners or however else, other properties, that they are willing to pay their share for their lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for consideration. I appreciate Mrs. Lax's comments on sidewalks, but I'm also, sidewalks have come up recently and previously for other developments, different setting, but I think the importance of them to me has become more clear, and it's better during than after. So I feel strongly about that.
Well, and I would agree with you. I think the difficulty to me is, you know, pushing something out to the future and trying to put a dollar commitment on it today or trying to define it today, it's almost, I would think it should be part of your public improvements to be installed as part of the project versus, you know, a future if we need it sort of thing, because I just think that's difficult to enforce. So, you know, I'm a fan of sidewalks too, Jane.
I also, I always use real estate to help me understand. I've been to the Byers Library, I've read the minutes from the Rappahoe Library District, and putting the library there to me from what I read is pretty a sure thing, and it will happen, and it's needed. And I think the sidewalk will be good for that, and I looked at the houses that have recently sold nearby and the ones for sale, and I very appreciate what Kat mentioned with the existing heights. It's lower-level buildings, and I think it's important to keep it at 35 feet. That's just based on what I have looked at. Any other comments or considerations or considering a motion?
Well, I guess I do have one question, again, more for the county. So when the land development code defines a particular type of zoning with criteria, is that something we can modify as far as the conditions of approval? Because I mean, really, we're modifying a zoning category, right? By changing the height?
PUD, so.
So we can do that?
I believe when the applicant referenced the PUD chapter, that is an old PUD chapter that no longer exists. You do determine, you know, you are given some flexibility with the PUD, but it really is you need to take into consideration what's existing.
Any other questions? Considerations, comments? Anybody here to make a motion or not?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve. Just get to my current page.
This being?
Yeah. I recommend that we approve in the case of number SDP Z-18-001, Main Street Villas SDP. I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, have listened to the applicant's presentation, and any public comment is presented at the hearing. to the applicant's presentation, and any public comment is presented at the hearing, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings of the staff report, subject to conditions 1 through 4 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mrs. Moonland. Do we have a second? Mr. Miller, would you second? Mr. Miller offers a second to the motion. Do you have any comments or corrections, suggestions? Then we will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries as it's presented, the motion with the conditions of 1, 2, 4. Thank you. We will now move on to item number 2, which is PM 18-004 Main Street Villas Minor Subdivision. And Kat Hammer will present for the county.
Kat Hammer, Senator 2. This is a minor plot, and the attorney has reviewed the documents for noticing, and has, the planning commission has jurisdiction to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. This is the same piece of property that we were speaking about in the last application, located in Byers, by South Main Street and West 6th. This application before you is to simplify a currently existing on-plated lot into two lots that we spoke about in the last application in regards to the library and a residential The applicant is LAI Design Group again, on behalf of the owner, Bradbury Properties. As part of this plot, we will also be requiring conditions in regards to a sidewalk requirement at the time of ASP, and the requirement for cash-in lieu. I have included a breakdown of what's required for cash-in lieu. The requirement for schools will be $14,805.60, for parks will be $5,683.20, and for other public utilities, facilities, will be $236.80, for a grand total of $20,725.60. I reviewed the plans, and the staff has recommended approval with the five conditions that have been revised and are in front of you tonight. I stand for any questions, and the applicant is here and may want to speak as well.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Okay, we will, just a developer, wish to make any more comments on this one?
Stephanie Stewart, again, on behalf of Bradbury Companies. So the only, I would restate all of my comments previously relating to the sidewalk, as we have gotten denied on our request, I still would point out that there's no timeline or any sunrise, I guess sunset, in terms of how long these funds can be held by the county, and so I would ask at least that the county attorney consider working with us on how we formulate this contribution of funds. And then on condition 5, the cash-in lieu, we had done our own calculations, and I had not previously been given these calculations. So, we came up with $6,954 for schools, based only on the Main Street Villas lot, and so I'm guessing that we may be close if lots, if the library lot is the remainder of that amount, but I'd ask that maybe we share and agree upon the amounts that are stated in condition 5 per the code. And I was looking at Chapter 14, 11, I guess 111.05 and 111.04. And I can address any questions.
So you have not seen these numbers previously?
We have not.
Right. Any other questions?
Just a quick question, so is this based on appraised value of the property?
Correct, for the.
For market value, whichever.
Yes, the market value for the rural district. It does include the Byers lot, the proposed library lot as well, because when you do go through a subdivision, that's when we collect our cash-in-lose, so it's for the entire four and a little bit more acre parcel.
Okay, and we were using assumed value method, which is the $20,000 per acre, so is that, that might be the difference?
Maybe, yeah, let me see what I've included in here. Yes, pardon me, I did use the assumed value of the land for 20 acres, $20,000 per acre. But it does include the four acres, so that might be where our math doesn't.
Okay.
Align.
Well, maybe we can just add to that condition that we'll calculate it and compare calculations, because I haven't had a chance to calculate the other lot.
When it comes back in front of the board.
Right. Yep.
I will double-check those for you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, we will now open the public hearing for PM 18-004 Minor Subdivision for Main Street Villas. We have the same sign-in sheet for both, before you heard from Mrs. Stewart, Mrs. Carpenter. Any other comments? Mr. Prinster?
No other comments.
And Mr. Miller?
No other comments, thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward? You do not have to have signed in. All right, seeing none. We will close the public hearing, and if the applicant has any other final comments. Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board for consideration. I think it was suggested that we change Amendment 5 to use the word "calculate" if necessary.
About to be verified, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody wish to make a motion? Why not?
Have the chair make a motion.
Mrs. Lax, thank you.
See, so, in the case, in case number PM 18-004 Main Street Villas Minor Subdivision, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation, and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. Madam Chair, I'll read these, since we want to add verbiage to number 5. Prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address public work, staff, comments, and concerns. Approval of PM 18-004 Main Street Villas Minor Subdivision is contingent upon the approval of SDP Z18-001 Main Street Villas Specific Development Plan. Prior to approval of the administrative site plan, the developer shall contribute funds in an amount sufficient to pay for the cost of construction of a sidewalk of minimum width of 5 feet within, along the full length of the road, driveway adjacent to the property shown as Lot 1 and Track A on this plat, in accordance with the county's then-current unit cost for improvement projects. The development shall meet all Byers prior district design requirements. The applicant shall pay a cash-in lieu of public land dedication prior to recording of the plat to be verified, figures to be verified by the county. Schools, $14,805.60, parks, $5,683.20, and other public purposes, $236.80.
Do we have a second for Mrs. Lax's motion?
I second the motion.
Mrs. Moonland seconds the motion. Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings our agenda to an end. Unless there are any other comments? Okay. And, meeting is adjourned.